I'd like to call this meeting to order. This is the Oshkosh Education, Oshkosh Area School District Board of Education Regular Meeting for November 28th, 2018. Has this meeting been properly noticed?
Yes, it has.
Would you please call the roll?
Carolyn?
Here.
Ellyson?
Here.
Evan?
Here.
Garner?
Here.
Hershaw?
Here.
We have four.
Thank you very much. And at this time, we have two students joining us from South Park Middle School. They are Felicia Turinsky and Hadley Ritten, and they are here to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance tonight. So we'll invite them to come forward and lead us all in the pledge.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We really appreciate your coming out on this cold night and joining us for the pledge. And we understand you might have some homework, so you might have to get going. But thank you very much for coming tonight. Hadley and Felicia, nice to see you again. This is always a very exciting time of the year. The month of November seems to be when we have art recognition, and it's a time to celebrate the successes of not only our students but also their teachers. So we have a number of art recognition awards to make available tonight. You'll be able to see examples of the student artwork on the screen, and those of you in the building may also see those pieces of art displayed on the walls. Dr. Cartwright will read the names, and I will meet the students somewhere in that vicinity over there to award you with your certificates.
So from Oshkosh North High School, as you can see, a beautiful piece of picture that we're taking a look, and our very first person for this evening would be Haley Krebs. Also from Oshkosh North High School would be Amy Foote. Michael Linza from North High School. Ian Van Damme from North High School. Anna Mueller. Abby Bulo. Lance Mickelson. Brooke Ramlow. And then from Merrill Middle School, Pahau Tao. Ayessa Solabar. Maddie Fabiano. From Webster Stanley Middle School, Alyssa Whittenhapt. Also from Webster Stanley Middle School, Aidan Dombrowski. Brianna Puckett. From Emmeline Cook Elementary School, Eleanor Baumgartner. From Merrill Elementary School, Pripya Tao. From Washington Elementary School, Lincoln Rombarge. From Reed Elementary School, Paige Jarvey. From Oaklawn Elementary School, Aria Schneider.
Aria.
Also from Oaklawn Elementary School, Natalie Anderson.[333.00][333.00](applause) From Webster Stanley Elementary School, Danika Cole. And last but not least, from Webster Stanley Elementary School, Ryan Whitford. As you can see, as we were watching through the display, the beautiful work that our children are doing in Oshkosh Area School District, we're very proud of all of you. We're very proud for you being here tonight as well and for being selected to be honored. So thank you so much for being here. Dr. Hershaw.[375.12][375.12](applause)
There are many individuals who may have inherent talent, and then there are those of us who have to have that talent developed.[388.62][388.62](laughter) A couple of mentors and teachers and coaches. So to all those art teachers out there, K-12, who contributed to the success of these students tonight, let's give them a round of applause.[401.02][401.02](applause) And your award winners and family members are welcome to stay for the rest of our meeting, but we do understand if you have other things to get home to and other things to take care of this evening. So thank you very much. We will move on then to board and administrative reports. I just have just very few remarks tonight. This is, as I said, a very exciting time of year. The month of November is one where we seem to spend a good deal of time recognizing the talents of our students in the area of art. Earlier this month, there was the annual art display of student work at the Masonic Temple, the result of many hours of our teachers organizing that and, of course, the instruction to the students to make that happen. We also are in the middle of the, or the beginning at least, of the sports seasons, the fall sports seasons, although I did meet a middle school coach in the parking lot on the way in who informed me that the middle school season, at least in basketball, is nearly over already. So while the high school is just beginning. We also have many concerts going on at this time of year. The Alberta Kimball Auditorium sees a lot of people coming through to packed houses, which is really fun for the children and especially those kindergartners who may be performing on a large stage in a 1,400-seat auditorium for the first time. It's really exciting. So I want to again thank the parents, the students, and the teachers who are making all those positive things happen for our children. And finally, this board had an opportunity to work with Ted Nitsky, who is the Executive Director of CISA VI. He worked with us some time ago. And as a reminder of some of the things he shared with us that evening on board roles and responsibilities, he has given us a tie, which I believe is red.
That's a red tie.
And so he just wanted to present it to all of you tonight. It wasn't the one he wore the night he was with us, but it is a red tie.
Love it.
So with that, I will pass the microphone on to Dr. Cartwright, our superintendent.
Thank you so much, Dr. Hershaw. I greatly appreciate that. So with our superintendent's good news report, we have quite a few things to report on for the month of November. Very first thing is going to be over at Washington Elementary School. Our fifth-grade students recently learned about the history of Thanksgiving and how the pilgrims made their voyage on the Mayflower. And what was so unique about this is not only did they learn about the voyage, but then they were able to connect their learning with robotics. So that is what's very unique about this. They were challenged to program dash robots to sail across the Atlantic Ocean while maneuvering around obstacles that boats may have actually encountered. And students had to get the dash safely from Europe to America to complete that challenge. So you can see on the screen there where they were drawing out the different designs and such for the robotics to go to get across from Europe over to America. Over at Carl Trager Elementary School, the first-grade classes there have been focusing on spreading kindness and giving back to the Oshkosh community. First-grade teachers and many first-grade families ring bells for the Salvation Army. Their shift raised $150 for the Salvation Army programs and services. Over at Oshkosh West High School, we want to give a great shout-out to many of our student athletes over there. Our cross-country runner, Taylor Guando and Bailey Wright, recently qualified for the WIAA State Cross-Country Meet. Soccer player Edgar Pariadia was selected to the Wisconsin Soccer Coaches Association All-State First Team. Now, this is really important because only 11 players in the entire state were selected. Additionally, three seniors, student athletes, recently signed national letters of intent. So in softball, Emily Miller signed with Marion University, and Lacey Cruz signed with Coty College. In soccer, Lauren Singstock signed with the University of Minnesota Duluth. Students at Smith Elementary School, who have been making positive choices, were recently rewarded with the opportunity to paint rocks at their Positive Behavior Intervention and Supports Recognition Event. Students were encouraged to paint something on the rock that made them feel happy. The finished paintings will be placed together on the school grounds to create a cool rock Shapiro STEM Academy recently held a book tasting event during the lunch hour. Families gathered to listen first to the first-grade students read some of their favorite books after creating and showcasing their own book tasting menu. Recently, the staff at Merrill Middle School participated in Against All Odds. It's a refugee simulation project facilitated by Dr. Funkum of the University of Wisconsin Oshkosh. The staff professional development opportunity aimed to help teachers and staff members increase their cultural competence and discover ways in which the school community can work together to ensure that all students can succeed and excel in a multicultural world. This is one example of how Oshkosh Area School District is committed to providing a culturally responsive environment and how schools throughout the district are creating a bridge between home culture and school culture. First-grade class at Oaklawn Elementary School recently welcomed author Dr. Sean Robinson to read and talk about his book, Dr. Dyslexia Dude. Dr. Robinson talked about his own difficulties in school and encouraged the students to work hard to overcome their own struggles. So a special thank you to Dr. Robinson for that. Students at Oshkosh North High School recently organized and participated in a mock election. The Communities II class hosted the mock election while all students and staff were able to visit the simulation throughout the day. In total, over 750 staff and students voted. The results of the mock election were very similar to the general population results as well. Additionally, over the past several weeks, Communities I students have been studying for the six modern wars. A culminating project took place during the school's Veteran Day Assembly with a social before and after for the veterans who are able to attend. Community I students assisted veterans and engaged in conversations with them in order to start building relationships. Students from Oshkosh West High School Global Art Class and the Academy for Global Studies recently participated in a HINA workshop with local HINA artists. Students learned about the history of HINA, its holistic properties, and its cultural significance in India and beyond. It was an excellent opportunity for the students to continue to grow on their journey into becoming global citizens. Schools throughout the Oshkosh Area School District recently held special Veteran Day activities, programs, and assemblies to thank and honor all of those who have served and are serving in the military. We are truly grateful for the many veterans, community members, and families that joined us in recognizing Veterans Day throughout the entire district. Congratulations to the Oshkosh West High School Drama Club. Students recently received all-state honors, as well as an Outstanding Ensemble Award and three Outstanding Lead Actor Awards at the 2018 Wisconsin High School Theater Festival. Additionally, Oshkosh West Performance of the Crucible was a highlight of the competition and the only performance of the day to attract an entire packed house. Third and fourth grade students at Webster Stanley Elementary are continuing their journey to Google Hangout with all 50 states. Students recently connected with Texas, Missouri, Kentucky, Indiana, and Wisconsin. Additionally, students at Webster Stanley Elementary School recently enjoyed a celebration of playing bingo with their buddy classes as a part of their Positive Behavior Intervention System framework. Buddy classes are one way Webster students connect at a multi-age level to create relationships and a family-like environment. Freaky Friday is also another way Webster students connect with multi-age peers. Once a month, the school community gathers for a fun activity to wrap up a social skills lesson based on a theme for that month. Perry Tipler Middle School and Alps Charter School recently celebrated the first-quarter award winners. Students received various academic and citizenship awards presented by grade level. We're very proud of these students. Reed Elementary School recently had a successful school-to-home event. Families came to learn about school goals and how their child is doing compared to those goals. All those that attended the event were provided with hands-on activities to do at home with their children. Ally Pecora, sophomore at Oshkosh North High School, recently qualified for the State Swim Meet in Madison, Wisconsin. Ally qualified in the 500 freestyle and placed 11th out of 24 swimmers with a new personal best time. South Park Middle School Elijah Oates was recently selected as the 2018 Oshkosh Chamber Essay Contest winner. Elijah received the award after writing the best essay about the manufacturing field trip his class took to the Arrowhead Systems during Manufacturing Month in October. Congratulations, Elijah. Additionally, South Park Middle School recently celebrated the end of the first quarter with the recognition of students who did a great job of following the Panther Way by being respectful, responsible, and safe. Those students were treated to an afternoon of fun activities, including open gym, karaoke, tabletop gaming, movies, ping-pong, and more. Lakeside Elementary School recently participated in Girls on the Run, an international program that helps young girls learn through a 10-week program focused on building self-confidence and developing healthy relationships. Lakeside had 13 girls participate, who were all able to complete a 5K race at the end of the program. Additionally, Lakeside Elementary was recognized at a recent Oshkosh Chamber of Commerce event for celebrating the 125 years in the Oshkosh community. The entire school community is proud of the school's past and is very passionate about its future. Here, we're spotlighting and continuing to spotlight three more of our teachers and sharing their reflections on why they teach. The individuals on the screen remind us of how supportive and encouraging our teachers are. We are truly grateful for these teachers and for all of our teachers throughout the Oshkosh Area School District. And then, as superintendent, I'm always committed to being present and engaged in our schools and throughout the Oshkosh area community. On the screen, you'll see just a few examples of where I've been spending my time for the past few weeks, albeit, except for the week of Thanksgiving, I'll be candid, I was not out in the Oshkosh area community. I was spending time with family. But beyond that, just an example of some of the activities. With that, I will go ahead and turn it back over to Dr. Hershaw.
Thank you very much. Again, a great report in terms of many things to celebrate, both on an individual level and on a school level or classroom level, as we saw. We have a wonderful district, and we continue to hear many, many positives about what's going on each and every day. Are there any district administrator supplemental reports tonight?
No, ma'am, there are no.
Okay. There was a listening session on November 7th, and I believe we have a report on that.
We do. So on November 7th, we did have an opportunity to hear from a parent as well as from a student. They came to discuss a situation with the bike lanes, specifically over at Oshkosh North High School. People are parking in the fire lane and the bike lanes before as well as after school. So they came to express their concern about that and some of the conversations that they're having with the SRO there at the school site, as well as with the principal. Officer Seehom was contacted and will send an alert to parents, and if it continues, he will be issuing citations. So please, if you are an individual or a parent or somebody who goes to Oshkosh North High School, be aware, because it does get a little bit confusing. I personally drove out there to take a look to see exactly what he was talking about. And it does look like that, because there's a lane and there's a pull-off on there. And the sign, it's clear, you know, that you're not supposed to be going into that pull-off area, because it's for the buses. But that middle area right there, the median, as you might say, and then the whole section down there, the signs are clearly posted, but I don't, I'm thinking people may be interpreting them as belonging to the bus lane area when it's actually on the street. So that's the area for which people are talking about. Something else, just going back to the listening session, another issue was people parking in the wrong spots, and a solution that was suggested was to possibly put cones up in place. And so at this point in time, what we're doing, as I mentioned before, is I personally went out there to take a look at what the situation is, and then I'll be following up with some additional conversations with the chief as well.
All right. Thank you very much, Dr. Cartwright. Are there any committee chair reports this evening?
I have Facility Finance.
All right. Mrs. Olmstead?
Thank you. Facility Finance met on November 15th. The first order of business we had was the 2018-19 budget changes. Mrs. Schnorr distributed the summary of budget changes showing approximates to actuals. The news was the Three Waves Clinic worked out an arrangement with GHT, which is our insurance, to pay the clinic directly. Therefore, the revenue expenditures were removed from our budget, and it's going directly to the clinic. There was a $1,760,071 in grant changes due to a variety of grant additions. There was a brief discussion on the process of the voucher payments to the private schools. It was noted also when we had discussed that the vouchers did double since last year. The next thing we talked about was the 2017-18 budget carryover to 2018-19. That was in our packets tonight also. The 2017-18 budget carryover was shared with committee. Kelly Handy had collected data from principals justifying carryover amounts. Some of the schools had some significant carryover. There was nothing out of the ordinary on the report. Hysterically, hist- no. Historically.
It might be.
It was a different meeting.[1406.33][1406.33](laughter)
Historically, there has been a cap to carryover. If it starts to get too high, Mrs. Schnorr addresses it with the site principal. There was discussion regarding the ready-for-learning carryover. In the past, technology did not support technology for 4K teachers. Therefore, the money was kept aside to replace laptops. Now that technology is going to support those computers, the carryover will be used to send all the teachers to conscious discipline training and also to open a new classroom at Jefferson. Exciting. Next thing we talked about was substitute pay. Ms. Pinkston had brought this to us. There was a concern with the Oshkosh Area School District is not in line with other districts regarding substitute pay. We operate on a two-tier system, meaning that substitutes with bachelor's degrees that don't have, that's not in education, receive $87 a day, and then their counterparts that do have, or no, the counterparts in other districts is an average of $105. And then, so we pay 87 to ones that don't have an education, you know, bachelor's degree in education, but we pay 105 to the ones that have a degree with education. And this has caused a significant factor in having sub shortages in our district. Ms. Pinkston requested that all substitute teachers be paid $105. There is a course offered by CISA VI for individuals with a bachelor's degree but no teacher's license. The Human Resource Department is considering paying the cost of the class, which is $100. There is also an option to have CISA VI teach the class in-house for a cost of between $1,200 and $1,500, with the understanding that the substitutes would be required to teach at least 20 days in our district. It was noted that our stating conditions are not good in Oshkosh, as in other districts regarding plans and pay and how they're treated in the schools. District discussions are occurring right now with regard to how schools can move and be more welcoming to subs. One change is to refer to our substitutes as guests, guest teachers. So we are proposing tonight on the resolution to change that pay increase. The next thing we talked about was additional staffing requests for 2018-19. It was noted that the request for additional staffing will only be made, this is the only one for the fall, that came to the meeting last, this month. There's a need for an additional nurse for the district's 4K population for safety reasons. There have been a number of health issues missed with online registration. Students are being serviced, but the district would like to be in a more proactive mode. There was discussion that the committee had brought up that we are short more than just this one nurse, and we had discussed with length with Mrs. Cartwright, with Dr. Cartwright, I'm sorry, that we could add more nurses, because I know last year, they had come to us and talked to us about that, and we have short quite a few nurses. So we looked at adding even more, and that's on tonight's agenda. And that also, the agenda number 13, they will be coming and talking to us about all these additions too, a little bit more, so they'll give the reasons why. Because there was also a request for additional .5 FTE of STEM support. The additional .5 FTE would give full-time support for materials and resources for our educators' need. We have the new school science program, and these kits have to be made, and it's taking a lot more time than we had anticipated. This .5 FTE would also take on duties of providing resources for schools that want to do STEM nights. It takes about 24 hours of prep time leading up to a STEM event. So there are currently nine schools on the docket that want STEM nights at their school.
And also, the university used to do that for us, and they no longer have those people.
Yes, yes. The university used to make all the kits and help us with that, and that is no longer the case. Thank you. Secondly, well, thirdly, actually, there are 14 elementary and some middle schools that have school gardens. The district's current STEM support person is part of the Wisconsin School Garden Network, and the gardens would be incorporated into the additional FTE, the .5. The engineering unit is the next phase of the science standards, which will require kits for those. So they would be taking on quite a few more, that .5 FTE would be taking on quite a few more responsibilities. Lastly, Merrill Elementary is in need of a temporary position to help with interventions. There have been 14 new special education students who have recently moved into the Merrill attendance area. This will be a temporary contract until the end of the school year. And then, the meeting is adjourned, and our next meeting is January 17th at 8:30. We will not be having a December meeting. We only had one thing on the list, so we have moved it to January, so we have a bigger agenda for that meeting.
Thank you, Mrs. Olmstead. Are there any other committee reports?
I have one.
Okay.
I'm gonna try doing, since I missed a portion of the meeting.
Do you want me to do half?
What's that?
Do you want me to do half?
All right. So the meeting that I'd like to make a report on is the Policy and Governance Meeting from November 27th of 2018. So there were, I believe, five, four, four initial discussion items. The first one talks about updates to the ELL policies. The major update here is that there's been a name change to the policy, and so we wanted to update that in the policy. And so the committee suggested the changes to the two policies just on the basis of the name change. The next one was 8510 Wellness, and this policy went over, did an audit of, was done regarding an audit of the food service, DPI food service. So there was a, hold on. there was a, hold on. So, I got ahead of myself. So at this point, there's been some changes that need to be determined and looked over more, and so the committee approved reviewing the policy after the audit, and no changes were made to the language at this point. Number three was a discussion around our agenda, the policy that creates our agenda, mainly around a plus delta tool that was brought to us through Ted Nitski at our board review a couple, a month or so ago. And we decided to kind of hold off on implementation of that to find out whether there are some, whether we need to do some clarification regards to how these records are maintained and shared. And so that'll come back to the committee again in the next month to review that again. A board member had requested a review of our tobacco policies to check the language as it related to the term vaping. And the committee is satisfied with the language that exists in three policies that relate to tobacco, nicotine, and related products by the use of staff, professional staff, support staff, students, and on-school premise. And so there'll be no change made related to those policies. And then, we set our next meeting for December 17th, on Monday, December 17th at 11:00 a.m. with potential Neola policy updates, administrator compensation, again, the continuing discussion on the plus, plus delta tool, and some Neola updates as it may relate to the tobacco, nicotine, and related products policies. So, that's all I have.
Thank you very much, Mr. Peschel. Are there any other committee reports? All right, then we'll move on to non-agenda-related public forum. Is there anyone who wanted to address the board on a non-agenda-related item this evening? Is there anyone who would like to address the board on an agenda-related item this evening? Seeing none, we'll move on to the consent resolution agenda. For the consent agenda, the board has been furnished with background information on each item or has discussed it at a previous meeting. These will be acted upon with one vote without discussion. If a board member wants to discuss any item, it will be pulled out of the consent agenda and will be voted on separately. We currently have requests to remove items 7B, 8A and B, 9, 11, 12, and 13. So that leaves us with 1 through 7 and 10. So we would need a motion and a second to approve those eight items.
So moved.
As soon as you read them.
Oh, I'm sorry. The board will consider approval of 1, minutes of October 23rd, 2018, special board meeting. Number 2, minutes of October 24th, 2018, regular board meeting. Number 3, minutes of October 24th, 2018, executive session, regular board meeting. Number 4, minutes of November 7th, 2018, regular board meeting. Number 5, minutes of November 7th, 2018, executive session and regular board meeting. Number 6, bills payable. Number 7, personnel aid, appointments, temporary appointments, resignations, and salary. And resolution 10, English speakers of other languages, ESOL program plan.
Now you can move.
Second. Well, extra time, make an amendment. I'm sorry. I have some questions related to number 6.
I think you're too late.
Yeah.
Well, that's fine. I can, I can bring it up. I'll bring it up in a request for future agenda items then.
Yes, you can do that.
So, not a problem, not an issue.
Sorry about that. You have to speak a little faster.
Well, I wasn't sure because they weren't right out of head of time. No, I'm just kidding.
You're absolutely right. That was on me. All right. So, we have a, it's been moved and seconded to approve resolutions 1 through 7, as well as 7A, that is, and 10. All those in favor? Or you're gonna call the roll on that, right? We're gonna have a roll call book. Okay. I am trying to move this meeting along.
Garner.
Aye.
I, Herzog.
Aye.
Herzog, aye. Olmstead.
Aye.
Olmstead, aye. Peschel.
Aye.
Peschel, aye. Carlin.
Aye.
Carlin, aye. Eliason.
Evans.
Aye.
Evans, aye. Motion carried.
Thank you very much. Now we'll go to resolution 7B, and I will read this aloud. 7B. Be it resolved that the Oshkosh Area School District Board of Education approve the retirements as filed with the secretary to the Board of Education.
So moved. Second.
Thank you. Resolution 7B deals with the proposed retirements of three individuals. Cindy Gran Corvitz of Oakwood Elementary School, where she serves as an autism teacher assistant, Diana Lemmer, an EBD teacher assistant at Perry Tipler Middle School, and Diane Listner from Webster Stanley Middle and Perry Tipler Middle, where she serves as a consumer, family consumer sciences teacher. All of these individuals have served the district for three or more years. Mrs. Gran Corvitz has been with the district for roughly 17 years, Mrs. Lemmer for 16, and Mrs. Listner for three. We just want to thank them as they begin this new stage of life. We will miss them in the district, but we certainly wish them well as they begin their respective retirements, having served the children and the families of our school district in such goods way, in such good ways. Any other comments? Please call the roll.
Herzog.
Aye.
Herzog, aye. Olmstead.
Aye.
Olmstead, aye. Peschel.
Aye.
Peschel, aye. Carlin.
Aye.
Carlin, aye. Eliason.
Evans.
Aye.
Evans, aye. Garner.
Aye.
Garner, aye. Motion carried.
All right. Then we have resolution 8A and 8B. We'll take these one at a time. 8A. Be it resolved that the Oshkosh Area School District Board of Education approve resolution authorizing issuance of an order under Wisconsin statute 117.13 detachment and detachment of small territory initiated by school boards, whereas a meeting of the, of the school board of the Oshkosh Area School District was held on November 28th, 2018, and whereas the school district of Oshkosh Area School District has proposed to detach the following described property, a legal description is to be added, owned by Patrick Dodd from the Oshkosh Area School District, and attach said property to the school district of Amaro, and whereas the description of the property has been certified as accurate by Jenny Sonleitner, municipal clerk of the town of Utica, and whereas the value of the property as of the most recent assessment was blank, and whereas the number of pupils residing on the territory as of the last date count was zero, and whereas the above identified property owners were properly noticed by a communication dated November 10th, 2018, and the item appeared on the school board agenda for the meeting dated November 28th, 2018. Now therefore, be it resolved that an order be issued and filed approving the detachment. Absolutely. October 10th. What did I say there? November 10th. Okay, October 10th. Thank you. We need a motion and a second.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. I'd like to call Sue Schnorr, Executive Director of Business Services, forward on this, please.
I assumed we need to table this somehow this evening because I don't have a legal description of the property. The homeowners approached the Amaro School District, who then approached the Oshkosh School District, but they're relying heavily on us to come up with a legal description. So I am still working on doing that. I now finally have someone who will do that for us, but the timing is such that I couldn't get it for this evening. I think we're gonna postpone it actually until next year, because when, when I actually tracked down someone who would be writing the legal description, it was much more complicated than it appeared. That's probably why no one was stepping up to do it. And so we decided instead of rushing it and making a mistake, that we would take our time and we would do it next year. When I actually talked to Winnebago County, who would be involved in this, they haven't done a land transfer for over 20 years between school districts, so no one really knows what to do. So we decided to just put the brakes on and make sure we do it right.
And we need a legal description for both properties, right? On each?
Right. I need a legal description.
Because they're gonna switch them.
Right.
And join one.
Right. So when I bring this back to you, you'll have a motion, motion to detach and a legal description, and then a motion to attach because we're, Amaro and Oshkosh are doing this property swap.
Right.
So that the landowners can square off their properties.
But as noted in this, the first resolution with the second to come, there are no students involved.
Correct.
And there is no monetary difference.
Yeah, and if anybody wants to look at it, the description, the picture of it in the packet shows it really well, like what they're doing, yeah.
Okay. So it would seem then that we would need an amendment?
We need a motion.
We need a motion.
A motion. I make a motion to table this.
To postpone it indefinitely.
Postpone it indefinitely.
Table indefinitely.
Okay. That was Mrs. Carlin.
There can be discussion and then a jury.
Thank you very much. Is there any discussion on this? I think Mrs. Schnorr has summed it up quite well. We want to do this correctly. And so it would be in everyone's best interest to delay this until we have the information that would allow us to make the decision correctly.
Can I, I have one question. So the assessment was blank as well. Is that something that is needed, or is there not a monetary assessment of the property?
It's not a requirement that you include the value of the property. The main purpose of that is if the two properties pieces were not virtually equal. And in this case, because they're virtually equal, I'm not actually sure if we will get the actual assessment of the individual properties, because they haven't been, the portion, the properties that are switching haven't, has not, have not been assessed separate from the whole mass of property. I'm sure they can come up with a, an estimated per square foot cost, but it's not an essential part of the resolution.
For what we're doing, it's not an essential part?
Correct.
Okay.
I do know that when you have requests for property transfers, you have to have the approval of both boards of education.
Correct.
If you do not, there is a school district boundary advisory board which meets in the spring of the year. And because I represent you on the board of control of CISA VI, our good friend Ted Nitski had nominated me to serve on that board. It consists of, you have to have a large school board representative, a small school board representative, and a middle-sized group, a board representative. And Oshkosh is considered a big district. So I have served on probably five such requests in Madison. They meet at the DPI if they have such requests. But it does cost, I believe, $750 in order for such a dispute to be settled by this group. And then there is, and there is a, an appeals process from that group. I don't know exactly where that goes, but there is an appeals process for that. So as long as the two districts agree on this, then, then that's it. But if one school district would approve and the other not, then there is an appeals process for the property owners.
Has Amaro approved of this already?
Yes, they're the ones that brought it.
Right, that's what I thought, yeah.
So yes, that shouldn't be a problem.
Okay.
Though they're going through a superintendent transition, so.
Right.
A point of clarification, their board has not formally approved this at this point in time.
But their Amaro school district is the one.
Their superintendent was the one who had brought this forward to, actually had spoken with the landowner who is making, making this request. And their superintendent at that point in time stated, from her perspective, it should not be a concern
Okay.
from, from the school, from their school board.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. So we would vote on the motion to table this indefinitely, is that correct?
Right.
Postpone it.
Postpone indefinitely.
Just the first portion.
Just the first portion. And then we'll take up part B momentarily. Okay. Please call the roll.
Olmstead.
Aye.
Olmstead, aye. Peschel.
Aye.
Peschel, aye. Carlin.
Aye.
Carlin, aye. Eliason.
Evans.
Aye.
Evans, aye. Garner.
Aye.
Garner, aye. Herzog.
Aye.
Herzog, aye. Motion carried.
Okay. Do we have to vote on the initial motion? Okay, good enough. Then we can move on to resolution 8B. Be it resolved that the Oshkosh Area School District Board of Education approve resolution authorizing issuance of an order under Wisconsin statute 117.13 detachment and detachment of small territory initiated by school boards, whereas a meeting of the school board of the Oshkosh Area School District was held on November 28th, 2018, and whereas the school district of Oshkosh Area School District has proposed to attach the following described property, a legal description to be added, owned by Danny and Deborah Matulie from the school district of Amaro, and attach said property to the Oshkosh Area School District, and whereas the description of the property has been certified as accurate by Jenny Sonleitner, municipal clerk of the town of Utica, and whereas the value of the property as of the most recent assessment was blank, and whereas the number of pupils residing on the territory as of the last count date was zero, and whereas the above identified property owners were properly noticed by a communication dated October 10th, 2018, and the item appeared on the school board agenda for the meeting dated November 28th, 2018. Now therefore, be it resolved that an order be issued and filed approving the, should say attachment, I believe.
Correct.
So we would need a motion and a second.
Can we, can we make a motion to table indefinitely, straight up from the beginning? Or does it have to be brought to the table?
No. So moved.
So, second.
Is there any discussion?
I would make a motion to table indefinitely.
All right. And we would need a second for that. Is there any further discussion?
Just, I would imagine this would get really complicated if there are pupils involved, wouldn't it?
Right. But in this case, there are not. But yes, it would get really complicated if there were students involved.
And it gets very complicated if there is a significant difference in the value of the property going from one district to another. Any other comments or discussion on this motion? Okay, then please call the roll to postpone this indefinitely.
Peschel?
Aye.
Peschel, aye. Carlin.
Aye.
Carlin, aye. Eliason.
Aye.
Evans, aye. Garner.
Aye.
Garner, aye. Herzog.
Aye.
Herzog, aye. Olmstead.
Aye.
Olmstead, aye. Motion carried.
Thank you very much. Then we will move on to resolution number nine. Be it resolved that the Oshkosh Area School District Board of Education approve the 2017-18 site department budget carryover to fiscal year 2018-19 in the amount of $673,397.60, as filed with the secretary to the Board of Education. So moved.
Second.
All right. This, this was pulled so that Mrs. Schnorr could just give a brief overview of the meaning of the carryover and how this might be utilized.
This is the process the district has used for, before my time coming here. Buildings and departments, certain departments, depending upon what they have going, can carry over money. It's better than a use it or lose it kind of philosophy, so it allows buildings to carry over money. But at the end of the year, when we've determined what the amount is, we ask them to come up with an estimated use. And so that's what you have in front of you. You have each building, what their carryover is, and what their anticipated use of that carryover is. Of the $673,306,000 of that is maintenance. In the past, we've not allowed maintenance to carry over, but the last couple of years, he's had some really big projects in transition in the summer. And so instead of totally losing that money out of his budget, $306,000 of this is maintenance, so $367,000 is individual building carryover.
Any other questions or comments on this particular item?
I have a question. So, so sometimes items get carried over from year to year. So are any of these items that have been being carried over for several years?
Every year, buildings do have some carryover. So it's not unlikely that, you know, a building has carryover every year. And, but I never go, I guess I've never gone back to look to see if they actually have spent it on what they say they're gonna spend it on. So to be honest with you, I'm not really sure.
Okay.
But I do kind of keep an eye on it, and if it starts to get a little too large, I'll have a conversation with that principal.
Phone call. It's the Sue call. Spend your money.
I think sometimes there have been buildings, maybe a high school or a middle school, that wanted to replace lockers, and they didn't have enough money even in carryover to do that all at once. So they might do that over a period of years. I can't think of any other one where that might be the case. You might know of some.
We don't really have an equipment allocation for them, so if they're, if they're saving money to do a really, a significant purchase, they, they will use carryover to kind of save up for a significant purchase. purchase.
I think that's good.
Any other comments or questions on Resolution Number Nine? If not, then please call the roll.
Carlin?
Aye.
Carlin, aye. Eliason?
Evans? Evans, aye.
Gardner?
Aye.
Gardner, aye. Hursak?
Aye.
Hursak, aye. Olmstead?
Aye.
Olmstead, aye. Heschel?
Aye.
Heschel, aye. Motion carried.
Thank you very much. Moving on to Resolution Number Eleven. "Be it resolved that the Oshkosh Area School District Board of Education approve the changes to the 2018-19 budget as outlined below and filed with the Secretary to the Board of Education."
So moved.
Second.
Again, this was pulled so that Mrs. Schnorr could have an opportunity to just give a brief summary or overview of these changes.
When the board originally sets a preliminary budget in August or September, a lot of these things aren't known. We can't set the tax levy till we know our state aid. We don't get our state aid number until October 20th, so it's kind of a vicious circle. We don't know what our payment for vouchers is until October, so a lot of these are just things that we do every year because we don't have the information until about the middle of October. So the major ones is changing the state aid, is changing the tax levy, changing the private school voucher. Also, we also used to pay for our Three Waves Clinic, and then our health insurance company would reimburse us. They're not just going to pay the invoice directly, so I took those revenues and expenditures out of the budget. That was a fairly significant change, but it changed both revenue and expenditure. We're still going to track the cost of that. And then we added some grants. The safety grants came through that we didn't have in the first budget, which was just over a million dollars, and then we made some tweaks to a variety of other budgets.
Thank you. Are there any other comments or questions on this one? And please call the roll on Resolution Number Eleven.
Eliason? Evans?
Aye.
Evans, aye. Gardner?
Aye.
Gardner, aye. Hursak?
Aye.
Hursak, aye. Olmstead?
Aye.
Olmstead, aye. Heschel?
Aye.
Heschel, aye. Carlin?
Aye.
Carlin, aye. Motion carried.
Thank you, Mrs. Schnorr. Resolution Twelve. "Be it resolved that the Oshkosh Area School District Board of Education approve the increase in pay for substitute teachers from $87 to $105 effective November 29, 2018 as filed with the Secretary to the Board of Education."
So moved.
Second.
Again, this one was pulled and we heard an overview of this in Mrs. Olmstead's report on facilities and finance, but we wanted to give Mrs. Pinkston an opportunity to share any thoughts on this before we voted on it.
Good evening, Board and Superintendent Cartwright. I am presenting a resolution this evening seeking to increase the pay for our substitute teachers. The request for a standard rate in pay of $105 for our substitutes with a bachelor's degree would make us more competitive with other districts and will help us address the shortage, as Ms. Olmstead stated, of the substitutes within our district. So it is my recommendation to the board that you approve the resolution this evening.
Thank you, Mrs. Pinkston. Is there any other discussion or are there any other comments related to this agenda item?
I have a comment.
Mr. Heschel?
Actually, thank you for the report, but my comment doesn't relate to it, so I'm going, I'm actually going to abstain from this today just to make it clear. I have two close family members that are substitutes in the district, so I feel that that's a conflict of interest for me, so I will be abstaining.
Thank you for bringing that to our attention, Mr. Heschel. Appreciate that. Any other comments or questions on this one? If not, then please call the roll.
Evans?
Aye.
Evans, aye. Gardner?
Aye.
Gardner, aye. Hursak?
Aye.
Hursak, aye. Olmstead?
Aye.
Olmstead, aye. Heschel?
Epstein.
Heschel, Epstein. Carlin?
Aye.
Carlin, aye. Eliason? Motion carried.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mrs. Pinkston. And finally, Resolution Number Thirteen. "Be it resolved that the Oshkosh Area School District Board of Education approve the additional staffing request for the 2018-19 school year as filed with the Secretary to the Board of Education."
So moved.
Second.
Now, we did hear a little bit about this from Mrs. Olmstead when she gave the report on the recent facilities and finance meeting, but again, we wanted to have the entire board have an opportunity to have an overview of this request and for the public then to also be part of the knowledge that the board is going to be voting on. So we have Mr. Kemmer here representing Pupil Services, and we have Ms. Conrad here representing curriculum and the request for the STEM position.
So I'll start. So we initially requested that we receive additional school nurse, particularly to help support our 4K program. Over the past 15, 18 years, we've seen a tremendous increase in the number of health-related needs in the district. Along with the increase in needs, we've seen a dramatic increase in the acuity of the health conditions that our students have. So there's been a need for much more time and attention for those particular students. At the 4K level in particular, there have been a number of things that have really increased the amount of time that's needed for our school nurses, for our 4K students. That's the first time we're receiving any type of documentation for our students related to health needs. So it's very time-intensive in terms of reviewing that, figuring out which students need plans, which students need IEPs or Section 504 plans on top of that. So there's a lot that goes into that. In addition to that with online registration, our nurses essentially have to go into Infinity Campus and review every student and check off after they do so, which takes quite a bit of time as well. Along with the needs at the 4K level, you know, we have five tremendous nurses in our district that do a great job, but three of them are actually here tonight. They are definitely stretched thin, you know, and adding an additional 4K nurse would meet the needs at the 4K level, but it wouldn't really ease the burden on any of the five that we currently have in place. And in addition to the rise in student health needs, along with that, you know, we've seen a huge increase in the number of 504 plans we have in the district, Section 504 plans. It's actually quadrupled over the past six years, and there's a number of reasons for that, but the bottom line is our nurses are involved with most of those plans. There's annual reviews. They spend a lot of time in those meetings. Along with that, let's see where, sorry, I kind of lost my train of thought there. Just the number of sites that our nurses currently have and the responsibilities that they have in each of those sites makes it, there's definitely a need for more support there.
Thank you, Mr. Kemmer. Are there any questions or comments related to Mr. Kemmer's presentation? Then let's move on to Ms. Conrad.
So initially in the spring adoption of our K5 science curriculum and our 68 science curriculum, a request was for a .5 office tech and STEM support because we anticipated the need for science kit refurbishment and the purchasing of all the stuff that it takes to do hands-on science and hands-on STEM. Well, we underestimated the need and how much time it was going to take. In addition to that, as you start to really pay attention and to work with our educators on those STEM needs, other needs have emerged, and so the proposal is to move from a .5 FTE to a 1.0 full-time equivalent position. And that position would help increase the STEM night support, our school garden support, that was something we had not included in the original proposal, and then also anticipating the engineering unit kits and refurbishment. And it was also mentioned in our report from Ms. Olmstead that the UWO science outreach is no longer has dispersed, and so with that, once again, that need is coming out for a full-time person, so we request your support with that.
Any comments or questions for Ms. Conrad?
I have one comment.
Sure.
But it's not necessarily, again, related to what you're talking about, but it actually relates to a name of one of our partners in the project. So Grow Oshkosh, I believe, is meant to be Growing Oshkosh.
That's very possible.
Okay, so that would be a change that I would suggest. I don't, it's not part of a resolution, so we don't
No.
have to make that change as a board, but I think it might
Okay.
be good to make that change in the report.
I think Ms. Stoli would appreciate that.
She would.
Thank you, Mr. Heschel. Any other comments or questions? Please call the roll.
I'm sorry. I'm so sorry, Dr. Hertzog. Mr. Kemmer is also prepared to report out related to the special position.
Oh, I'm sorry.
My apologies.
No worries. So as Mrs. Olmstead mentioned in her report, we've had an influx of students at Merrill Elementary School this year with disability-related needs, to the point now where over 25% of the student population at Merrill Elementary has an IEP. So along with that, we're actually in the process of evaluating for additional students for special education services at that school, so we're at a point where it's difficult for the current staff, special education staff in that building, to meet the IEP minutes for those students. And along with that, Mrs. Olmstead mentioned the need for additional intervention support for our special education students, primarily in the area of literacy. So this temporary position would go toward meeting the disability-related needs of those students.
And if I understood Mrs. Olmstead's facilities and finance report correctly, these additional students largely moved in after the, at the start of the school year.
Correct.
It was 14, I think, was the number that decided.
Yeah, 14 of them.
So they weren't in the district last year, but they are now, and they're concentrated at Merrill Elementary.
Yes.
Is that what I understood?
Merrill Elementary, yes.
Elementary, sorry.
Elementary, that was my question, okay.
Thank you for that clarification.
Mm-hmm.
Now, are there any other comments or questions?
So sorry. Thank you, Dr. Hertzog. It's crazy.
If not, then please call the roll.
Gardner?
Aye.
Gardner, aye. Hursak?
Aye.
Hursak, aye. Olmstead?
Aye.
Olmstead, aye. Heschel?
Aye.
Heschel, aye. Carlin?
Aye.
Carlin, aye. Eliason? Evans?
Aye.
Evans, aye. Motion carried.
Thank you very much. I think it's important for the entire board to hear the big picture on some of these things that are only heard typically by three board members in committee, so that's the primary reason why we pull those resolutions out.
And I think that was the first time that we did completely wrong the circle.
Yeah, voting.
Going first.
Right. Good observation, Mr. Evans. Very good. Are there any individually considered resolutions tonight? Seeing none. How about requests for future agenda items? I think Mr. Heschel might have something for us.
Yeah, it was related to Number Six.
Okay.
I guess I wanted to make a request if we could get the accounts payable earlier than the day of. So Sue, if you could come up, please.
No, we're not prepared to discuss this, so.
This is just future.
Future. Yeah, so.
Future agenda items.
Yeah, so you don't need to respond. It was very hard for me to get to it today, so with our regular work schedule. So if there was a way that we could plan for that to be, you know, part of our agenda and can be clicked on in our agenda, that would be much appreciated somewhere down the line. So I understand that's a workload issue, and that's different than what we've always done, but I think it might be helpful for us to modify that.
So perhaps Mrs. Schnorr or Dr. Cartwright could get back to you on that, and they can copy the full board on that, and that would be fair.
Absolutely.
But we're not noticed to discuss that this evening.
Discuss. Thank you.
Thank you. Announcements, any announcements this evening? Seeing none. I believe we would be prepared to adjourn to executive session for Number One, considering the disciplinary data of specific persons under Wisconsin Statute 19.85, Perend I, Perend F, and Wisconsin Statute 120.13, Perend I, I couldn't tell if that was an I or an E, I mean, an I or an I. Perend I and Perend E. A, review expulsion recommendation from expulsion hearing officer for a middle school student. And two, deliberating or negotiating the purchasing of public properties, the investing of public funds, or conducting other specified public business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session under Wisconsin Statute 19.85, Perend I, Perend E, a property transfer.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Hursak?
Aye.
Hursak, aye. Olmstead?
Aye.
Olmstead, aye. Heschel?
Aye.
Heschel, aye. Carlin?
Aye.
Eliason? Evans?
Aye.
Evans, aye. Gardner?
Aye.
Gardner, aye. Motion carried.
Thank you very much. We stand adjourned, and we reconvene down in the IS team room.[1761.21]